Good evening. My name is Leigh Tucker and I'm the Chair of the Cleveland Chapter of the League of Women Voters. Thank you for joining us this evening for the Ward 10 Cleveland Council Candidate-
Five!
I apologize, I'm starting off terrible already with the Ward 5 Cleveland Council Candidate Form. Candidate forms are offered by the League to provide the candidates a chance to introduce themselves and to give the citizens of the community an opportunity to ask questions and learn more about the candidates so that they can make an informed decision when voting. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization and does not endorse or oppose any candidate or political party. Candidates are requested not to post photos of themselves with our logo nor anything that implies an endorsement. We do however truly appreciate both candidates' willingness to participate in this educational form this evening. We'd like to thank Tri-C for the use of the Jerry Sue Thornton Center and you, the audience, for participating. This evening's form is being livestreamed and posted online. The video will be posted on the League of Women Voters Greater Cleveland website. Our moderator this evening is Janay Hambrick. Ms. Hambrick is a dedicated professional with over 12 years of experience at Key, currently serving as a team leader. She holds a Master's Degree in Political Psychology, Bachelor's Degree in Political Science, blending academic expertise with a passion for leadership and community impact. As the President of Northeast Ohio Young Black Democrat Committee Person for Ward 6-C in Cleveland, Janay is deeply committed to civic engagement and empowering young voices in the city. She is also a proud member of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated where she upholds the values of scholarship, service, sisterhood, and finer womanhood. Janay is known for her thoughtful facilitation and ability to create inclusive spaces for dialogue. Today she brings that same energy and commitment to moderating this candidate form, helping guide a meaningful conversation about leadership, representation, and the future of Cleveland. Come on up, Janay.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us today for the Ward 5 Council Candidate Form. I'm Janay Hambrick and I will be your moderator for today's form. Today's candidate for City Council will be asked a series of questions to help the residents of Ward 5 to understand what the candidates would do if elected. Some questions have been submitted in advance by the residents and organizations of Ward 5, and remainder of the questions will be submitted by the audience or via livestream. We asked the audience to avoid expressions of support or opposition to any candidates during the form. Please do not interfere with everyone being able to hear what is being said by each candidate. As a final quick reminder, this is a forum and not a debate. Please direct all questions to the audience, not your fellow candidates. The candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement and two minutes for a closing statement. The candidates will have one minute to answer questions. The time will be monitored and strictly enforced by our timekeeper sitting up front. Right here, raise your hand, timekeeper. The timekeeper will hold up a card to give you 30 seconds and a 15-second warning. When time is called, the timekeepers will hold up a bright red card to notify you that your time has expired. When time has been called, we let you finish your sentence, but we will also reserve the right to use the mute button if necessary. So at this time, please turn off your or mute your cellphones. And with that, let the form begin. Actually, also a couple more reminders. We do have someone walking around with paper and pens, so if you have a question at any time, please raise your hand and they'll bring it up. I got a stack of questions. I'm going to do my best to get to as many as possible, so if I don't get to your question in advance, I apologize about that, okay? So we're going to start with our opening statements. We're going to go in alphabetical order and then we will alternate beginning. So your two-minute opening statement, you can go now.
All right. Can everyone hear me okay with the audio? All right. Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Councilwoman Rebecca Moore. I'm so honored to be here this evening and to have a great conversation about Ward 5 and the city. So I, and you know, I'm excited to dive into some policy and neighborhood-specific questions, but you all got to get to know your council candidates. So let me tell you a little bit about myself. I got my passion for this work starting when I was 19. I had a terrible landlord who wasn't fixing anything around my apartment building, and that wasn't a big deal when it was just a leaky faucet, but when eventually the heat wasn't working, I knew that something had to change. A friend of mine told me about a tenants' rights hotline because call after call that I'd sent hadn't resulted in anything changing. And when I called, a guy on the other end of the phone walked me through writing what turned out to be my very first demand letter. And it said, "If you don't fix my heat, I'm not paying my rent." And when I delivered that to him, wouldn't you know, a day or two later, I woke up in my bed, warm and cozy for the first time in weeks. And I remember lying there and just feeling like I had been given a superpower. I hadn't known the words that could change my life, and then somebody gave me those words. I used them and my life was improved. And I knew right then and there, everyone deserves to have those words when they need them. That passion led me to law school. It led me back here to Cleveland where I got a job at Legal Aid. I thought Legal Aid was it for me because I was doing this work that I cared about so much. And then I had another moment that changed my life, which was a mom walked into my office with her two-year-old daughter, and she said, "My daughter was poisoned by lead and the city did an inspection but didn't tell me what happened." And I know my time is almost up, so I can't tell you every step in the story, but suffice it to say, the city had messed up. And I worked with her. We ended up suing the city and seeing that we deserved so much better, lit this fire for me, and it made me want to run because I believe we all deserve a Cleveland that works for all of us. I'm really excited to dig into the other questions, but I'll leave it there.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Councilmember Richard A. Starr. Currently serve at Cleveland City Council as for the neighborhoods of Ward 5, which encompasses downtown, North Broadway, Central Kinsman, and Midtown Neighborhood. A little bit by myself, I will tell you that I was born and raised in a central neighborhood, grew up in King Kenny Public Housing by a single mother, Simone Wallace, who raised six kids, four boys and two girls by herself. I am a graduate of East Technical High School and a graduate of Ballard and Wallace University where I was able to obtain my undergrad degree in Sports and Business Management and my graduate's degree of Masters in Business Administration. Before, I want everyone to understand is the work that I do for the neighborhood has been a calling that had been upon me ever since I was around 17, 18-years-old. My story is a little bit different because I went through the peaks and the highs and the valleys, the lows of different challenges that you may deal with while you are trying to pursue excellence and be a great role model. So no, I didn't go the traditional route, straight to college. I did three years, came back, and got both my degrees, and I've been able to serve in the neighborhood at the Boys and Girls Club, starting off at 18-years-old, for about 14 and a half years. 2017, I decided to run for office because I believed that I reached the ceiling of how much work I can do to help just mainly 6 to 18-years-old. When I was able to run for office, I learned even more about the community and the needs, and I've been able to address those rather than dealing with fires, rather than dealing with food insecurities, rather than dealing with youth, rather than dealing with violence. I've been at the forefront, so no, I have not been drawn into this ward. Yes, I have lived in the central neighborhood. Yes, I am a resident of the downtown neighborhood, and I look forward to being able to have the opportunity to receive the support from the residents on November 4th to choose a candidate that can actually represent the entirety of Ward 5.
Great, well, thank you both. So we're going to go into our first questions. Out the gate, "Do you support the mayor's settlement with the Cleveland Browns? Why or why not?" So we're going to go in reverse order, so you're first.
So, the settlement with the Cleveland Browns is a huge news that we just found out maybe 48 hours ago, or rather earlier this week, I would say. That is something that we have to dig deep into, get an understanding. But what I would tell you is, out of anybody on Cleveland City Council, I am someone who has a sports management degree, and also I would tell you from that degree that I got from Ballard and Wallace, I studied the actual reason why the Browns actually left back in '95 and what caused those turmoil. I wrote a 30-page paper dissecting what is going on. So as far as this current settlement, I would have to look deeper into the actual negotiations to see what they agreed on and see what does it, what do we get in return for the city? So it's not something that I can say I can agree on or vote for because I haven't seen a contract. But look forward to Monday when we are going to have a meeting with the Law Director to talk about the actual contract and see what the agreement actually looked like so we can make an informed decision.
I would also second the points about us. We found out about the press conference about 15 minutes before it started, so there were elements of the deal that haven't been run past us, but I'll share with you the two priority goals that I've had the entire time with the Browns stadium. The first is stopping the use of our public taxpayer dollars through the general fund to pay for the stadium owned by NFL billionaire owners. That is completely inappropriate. We have so much work we need to do as a city. When we're spending $8 million a year out of our general fund and our entire street repaving budget is $12 million, things have to change. So the first goal is not using public taxpayer dollars to fund the stadium. The second goal for me has always been keeping the Browns in downtown Cleveland. Having the Browns in downtown Cleveland creates density. It creates a sense of community and a sense of purpose. And obviously, having them move to Brook Park is different than having them move to Baltimore, but this agreement does not hold on to that second priority. We lose the Browns and we agree to help them not only move to Brook Park, but use $600 million of state money, not city money, to do so.
Thank you. So our first, our next question is going to come from Leep. "Cleveland will be hosting the Special Olympics in 2030, bringing more than 5,500 athletes and coaches and over 125,000 fans and family members to our city. How will you work to ensure Cleveland is a welcoming, accessible place for people with diverse disabilities, not only through trained volunteers, but also by encouraging accessibility across restaurants, stores, ride shares, museums, casinos, theaters, and other public space?"
Absolutely. Thank you for that question and raising the exciting thing on the horizon of having the Special Olympics come in 2030. I'll give you an example of something we had to do to even win this bid, which was our restrooms in the airport didn't have changing tables that could accommodate folks with special needs. And they didn't have them across all genders. They didn't have ones that folks who, adults or larger-sized people could use. And we actually fixed that at the airport, and that was one of the requirements for us to win the bid in the first place. So we have to go through an audit process like that across all of our public resources, our rec centers, our stadiums, but also restaurants have to think about how they're going to accommodate folks with disability. In my office, we've worked to make sure that all of our materials meet what are called the WCAG guidelines, which are for folks with visual disabilities or who have other access needs on the internet. So we've worked to make sure that we are as accommodating as we can be. It's always a milestone out in the future. You're never going to fully get there. There's always more to do and more to learn, but absolutely, we're fully committed to making the Special Olympics success and making City Council accessible.
So, same question. I would, I would say one of the things that we have to do whenever you get a bid or win a bid for an opportunity to bring a world-class event to your city, you have to check the box of everything that you have to accommodate everyone. So when you talk about the Special Olympics, it is more than just, hey, we won a bid and that's mean we're going to generate some revenue for our neighborhoods. No, you got to make sure you have everything in place and checked so people can actually be involved in your city and also have the accommodation that is needed for you to be able to host events. So as this bid has went on, now as me being on the Vice Chair of the Municipal Services and Properties Committee, we could use this opportunity to make sure each department, public works, everyone is doing their part to make sure we accommodate everyone. And also understanding the importance of the economic impact that it does have on your city when you have events like this in place. So it's going to be a great opportunity for us to learn and also figure out what's the best way to accommodate everyone coming into our city.
Thank you. Our next question is, "Both of you are on the verge of concluding your first term. Share three to five accomplishments you made during your first term."
Oh, that's a good one. One of the things I definitely could say from within my first term is, right now, we're projected to have $300 million worth of development coming into Ward 5. And what I mean by development, we have an opportunity that we have a major project that I'm looking to announce that is going to bring roughly over 1,000 jobs on Opportunity Corridor that will be announced later on this year. We also have been able to create a new way to be able to bring a grocery store back into the central neighborhood while working with the Central Kinsman Wellness Collective as well as other leaders to understand the importance of having good quality food. One of the things I also would contribute and think of that is very important is declaring gun violence as a public health crisis. That is something that is definitely needed so we can be able to address the root causes of this violence. And then also, I would tell you, is it's important that we are getting up and running, creating an African-American Mail Commission so we can be able to help these young people in our neighborhoods so they can reach solutions, so we can be able to create jobs and opportunities for everyone.
I love this question, and I hope to be able to talk about more of these, but I'm going to do a lightning round of stuff that I'm particularly proud of. Number one, I worked with one of my senior buildings to pass the first-ever law in the city about how we light our outdoor parking lots because our seniors were having their cars broken into repeatedly, and this landlord was not working to make sure the parking lot was lit up well at night. So we worked with them to set the first-ever standard, turn it into legislation, pass it, make it law, and enforce it. Second, I've got major renovations in most of my parks and commitments for substantial funding down payments on renovations on the rest of them. My constituent services report that I released my first year in office cataloging the first 1,000 calls that came into the Ward 12 Council Office was used as a catalyst to relaunch the 3-1-1 system. And I'm going to take you on a deep dive, which is that I love that as part of that, we got garbage bin delivery, okay? It was a basic dignity issue. You couldn't get a new garbage bin delivered in the city, down from a wait time of over 100 days to get a new garbage bin to a wait time of less than 10 days. It seems like a small thing until you're dealing with it and there are raccoons and groundhogs getting into your garbage, but it mattered.
Thank you. Also, just want to remind you guys that we do have people walking around with paper and pen, so if you do have a question, please just raise your hand and they'll bring you over some paper and pen if you have a question. Okay, so our next question is, "What is your thoughts on the potential plan to place a park and recreation levy on the ballot in 2028 to increase their operating budget? Also, Mayor Bibb has proposed selling naming rights to help generate revenue. What is your thoughts on this?"
Absolutely. So first of all, I do support the levy in 2028 to help us improve our parks and rec system, full stop. Every single city park and rec center should be a crown jewel. You should be so proud to drop your kids off at your local rec center, and too often, you aren't, okay? We worked really hard at Stella Walsh to make improvements so that we had a new weight room, and I'm excited that through commitments, both from the prior council people and through Councilwoman Starr here in Ward 5, both Central Rec and Lonnie Burton Rec are slated for improvements that we need to see through across the finish line. And I apologize, the second half of your question was about-
Mayor Bibb has proposed selling-
Oh, the naming rights. I believe I was the only one of two council people to object to the naming of one Sherwin Way. I don't support sending off like sort of Adidas Nike logos for our rec centers without a really full public vetting that everyone's comfortable with what's happening.
So one of the things is, I had the opportunity to sit down with the administration to discuss the park and recreation levy, which is an opportunity for us to figure out, how do we generate revenue to be able to bring the good class, world-class program that we have? If you look at the rec center budget, they do not have much of a budget right now. They're relying heavily on the general fund dollars to be able to do everything that you need. So when they talk about the $8 million that we're putting into the Central Baff House Recreation Center, when you talk about the $8 million we're putting into Lonnie Burton, what's the sense of having $2 or $16 million in rec centers, but you don't have the dollars to have programming? So you got to be creative and look at ways to be able to generate revenue. So naming rights is one of the options on the floor, to be able to, on the table rather, for us to be able to discuss how we can be able to be creative with those dollars that we can generate. We have not came to a full, full support of understanding what it would look like, but it's something we definitely need to do because I'm tired of seeing rec centers that we invest in and no one is in there. And that is something that we need to figure out overall as a city.
Thank you. So our next question comes from Vote 411. "What is the biggest challenge facing your ward and its residents?"
So the biggest challenge facing our ward, because one of the things is, the ward is a big ward. Different areas, different locations, we have different problems. One of the biggest changes, we dealing with housing. Housing is a bigger major issue, especially in public housing where individuals are living in places where you should have renters' rights, housing rights, when they're not getting those needs met. Making sure we have good quality food all throughout the ward, like a grocery store, different produce is a very big important. Also, making sure we have programs for every genre, not just for the kids, not just for the adults, but also our seniors is a major problem. Also, making sure houses and nuisance properties are coming down and bringing in development. One of the things that we have in Ward 5 is one of the wards with the highest undeveloped land. Yes, we didn't did a lot the last three and a half years with tearing down nuisance properties, but now we're open for opportunities for development and making sure the right development come into our neighborhood so we get some sustainability.
Thank you, and I would absolutely echo all of those. I think if I could put sort of an overarching umbrella across all of those, as well as the ward as a whole, broadly, let's talk about the inequality in our city and in our ward overall. We know that Cleveland, Clevelanders have suffered at the hands of systemic disinvestment. I'm a white lady running to represent Central and Kinsman, and I say that on doors all the time, and because of that, you have to lead with the story of redlining. You have to lead with how inequality and white supremacy has affected our city. And the reality is that now we have a ward that's going to run all the way from some of the wealthiest areas of the city in downtown Cleveland, across through Central and Kinsman, over to Slavic Village, through Midtown. We have to reckon with this history. We have to reckon with this history, and until we deal with the inequality that has made health disparities, educational disparities, housing disparities, that your life is impacted by the zip code and your race, we are not ever going to succeed. Black folks aren't going to succeed, white folks aren't going to succeed, brown folks aren't going to succeed. We have to address it across the board.
Thank you. Our next question, "Youth violence has become a growing concern. What investments will you make in youth outreach, education, and mental health to prevent violence before it starts?"
Absolutely, and I really appreciate that you framed that question around violence before it starts because too often, we're of course talking about violence after it happens. I would be remiss if I didn't first acknowledge that my colleague, who I'm running against, has a long history of doing youth intervention work, and there's nobody who I've learned from or collaborated with more, and so I want to of course respect that. I'll tell you that my expertise that I come to with this is around lead poisoning. We know that when a quarter of our incoming kindergarteners have at least one elevated blood lead level, the likelihood that they have an interaction with the criminal justice system or that they are the victim of gun violence later in their life is higher. And so I have worked to try to make sure that our kids are not being poisoned by lead and they get a true opportunity to thrive the way that they need to. But I also will absolutely learn and follow the lead of experts across the city, folks like Maisha Crowe, who have worked very hard to make sure that we are tackling this problem later down the line as well.
I consider myself from the neighborhood who taught me that I am a youth development professional before I meant anything else with other title. And through this work of working with youth, you have to meet them where they are at and also give them the skills and the resources. People talk about redlining, but I lived through the redlining. I'm one who's been born and raised and dealing with this. When I'm talking about violence, my younger brother went to prison when he was 18-years-old for murder, and he's never been tested to figure out, do we have high levels of lead? But now he just came home August 28th of this year, and he still can't figure it out because he's still got the mindset of an 18-year-old when he went to prison. So when you talk about youth violence, you have to get to the root causes. You got to make sure the resources and the dollars are getting into the neighborhood to solve these problems. You got to make sure you hold the schools accountable to make sure they had a resource to help the family. It's not just one person, it's not just one entity. We have to do this together as a unit, as a community, to be able to figure out how to solve violence in our neighborhood, especially with our youth, because they're not getting younger and they're not even reaching the age of being able to be 25. They are dying young, and we need to stop this.
Thank you. So I'm going to read this question. So this is your question, and I don't say it right, I apologize. "Ohio Republicans are coming after property tax. How does this affect Ward 5, city services, etc., and what is your plan to combat this?"
One of the things that I learned just from me having the opportunity to meet with other individuals that are elected officials, and this is a quote that I learned from Mayor Frank Jackson, who also was the council member of Ward 5, and one of the things he told me is, when you're in office, the biggest challenge you have to do is, how do you create a plan to stop stuff before it actually hit? So this is something you have to be able to work with our Cuyahoga County Council, our state legislators, to make sure they are doing their job to think about the decisions and the way they are voting, as well as making sure our congressperson understands the ramifications of their vote or how they should speak up. Property taxes are something that always goes up, but it is not going up at the right proportion for each individual person or each neighborhood. So in Ward 5, a lot of people bring up the fact that we have public housing, but a lot of folks don't talk about we have a lot of homeowners, and that affects them as well. So making sure we have things in place to be able to make sure things are done in an equitable way.
Thank you, and I want to be really clear about this because there is a risk that Ohio Republicans put this on our ballot, and they dangle this thing out in front of us like a shiny toy, thinking that Cleveland's going to leap for it, that we would get rid of our property taxes. And I want to be very, very clear about what happens if that succeeds, which is that our schools will be devastated. There will not be the money we need for CMSD, full stop, period, and we will end up with a failing educational system in freefall, far worse than what we have right now. And I want to be very clear that Ohio Republicans created this crisis in the first place, first of all, through decades of unconstitutional funding of our schools. Cleveland should have been getting more money for our schools for decades. And second of all, Ohio Republicans have failed to offer very basic, minimal property tax relief for seniors, longtime owner occupants, and then as it's gotten higher and higher and higher, they've dangled this opportunity to just rip away all of the property taxes. They don't care what happens next, they just want to get rid of it entirely. It is gross, we should reject it and protect our schools.
Thank you. Our next question, "How do you plan to support reentry programs or initiatives that reduce violence by helping formerly incarcerated individuals in Ward 5?"
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Well, I think I'll echo this point about making sure that it's all of us, right? That one council person can't do that alone, but we have incredible partners, groups like Orianna House, that do really important reentry work. And when I was a housing attorney at Legal Aid, we saw up close that folks who were reentering, our returning citizens, they couldn't find basic housing anywhere. They couldn't find basic housing anywhere because they were getting rejected over and over again, both through public housing because of restrictive rules there, and then through private housing as well because landlords weren't being held accountable. And so making our reentry system work, even just around housing, will have a huge impact because what's happening for, if you can't get stable, then a different life becomes a lot more enticing, right? And so what we know is that if someone's couch surfing for months and their parole officer is having to go to a house where they're not actually supposed to be at, things aren't going to go well. And so changing our rules to make housing acceptable and available for folks who are reentering citizens would go a long way.
One of the things that I did since I've been on council, I was actually appointed to become the Reentry Coalition Tri-Chair for Cuyahoga County. So when you talk about the hundreds of programs and the nonprofit organizations, I am actually one of the chairpeople who is bringing them together to be able to create an actual plan to help someone the minute that they come home. Just two weeks ago, I took a trip down to Lorain County Prison with Mr. Jerome Baker, who is a resident of Ward 5 or grew up in Ward 5, and we went to go talk to individuals in jail, and we found out a lot of programs, when they come home, they see them for the first week, but then they don't see them no more. So making sure, through my position as the Tri-Chair of the Reentry Coalition, making sure we change that up. So one of the things they're doing is going through a SWOT analysis of the actual coalition to be able to determine how do we actually use those dollars- to be able to determine how do we actually use those dollars that they have in those organizations or getting those dollars to the fund. Also, I would like to say I'm proud that we hosted a reentry housing for those individual fair with my tag team partner, Michael Hauser of Cuyahoga County, where we actually were getting people actually houses um, that just recently came off of prison, so there are a lot to do.
Thank you. Uh, so our next question is from Leap. How do you stay informed about current events and issues affecting the city?
The best way that I stay informed of issues that are impacting the city is that I stay in the neighborhood. And what I mean by that is I talk and work with the leaders. I'm actually boots on the ground in the community, whether I'm walking in Central, whether I'm walking in um, North Broadway where I'm walking downtown with my dog, um, rather than I'm doing different things on Kinsman or after coming to different meetings. When you talk about men and women in Central, they host a weekly meeting every Wednesday. You see residents there and you able to find out what's going on. Also, one of the things is I've been very transparent with residents in the neighborhood. It's not, it's not that many residents that don't have my cell phone in Ward five who keep me informed. One of the things is I also do is I ensure that all of our police commanders from all, both the third and fourth district, the minute something happens, they're giving me a text, a call, informing from their end what happens. Also, I make sure I use uh, my platforms such as social media, email blast, uh, community meetings, stand engagement. There's not a, and there's not a moment that residents don't hear from me or I don't have an opportunity for the opportunity for them to um, talk to me about their things in our office.
Thank you, and I think that point about it being a two-way street is, is really important because similarly, uh, you can't be a council person without having folks have your cell phone. They're calling you when this is going wrong, that's going wrong. And it's a really important part of the job, right? You have to be accountable in that way. And I've been, I've been available like that in Ward twelve and I can absolutely promise you I'll be available like that in Ward five. But in terms of the questions about how I stay in touch with the news, like I read stuff from Signal, from Signal Cleveland, Cleveland.com, the Cleveland Ohio Remembrance Page. I wish that the Cleveland Ohio Remembrance Page hadn't been the first thing to get me certain news stories, but there've been times that absolutely they've beaten uh, all sorts of traditional media. And sometimes they, they beat the neighborhood, uh, they, they beat the neighborhood line as well. So I feel like you got to have your eyes and ears open. Uh, what's that Anthony Harrison line, councilman, a sensitive ear and uh?
That would be Councilman Conwell. And genuine heart and um, your ear to the streets so you can understand what's going on.
There you go.
Until you can move that beat.
There you go.
Thank you. After several fatal police pursuits by Cuyahoga County Downtown Patrol Units and the police chase that began in Euclid ended within, within a death of a driver in Cleveland who was not involved in a chase, what type of restrictions of any will you advocate for on police chases, especially chases that cross into Cleveland?
Absolutely, so first of all, I want to be very clear that I was one of the only council candidates to support issue twenty-four in my twenty twenty-one council race. And I fully believe in citizen oversight of, a civilian oversight of our police force. I've also had to deal with this issue in my current role because we have suburban forces like Parma and to some extent Euclid who are chasing into Cleveland, killing and hurting people here. And what happened recently was the sheriff, who is not bound by Cleveland's rules. Cleveland rules right now are no chasing. The sheriff is not bound by that. The sheriff went and chased and pursued, they chased and pursued to the point that the high-speed chase killed an innocent bystander. This is completely unacceptable and what's happening is that folks know that certain departments can and can't chase. So Parma, if you get in trouble in Parma, you're running into Cleveland because you think that you can't, you won't be pursued there. What we need is a universal policy across Cuyahoga County. The rules around pursuit should not change depending on what city you're in or which officer is trying to pull you over. And frankly, I've seen enough, we need to make sure the pursuit policy is not allowed at the sheriff's office.
One of the things that you have to deal with when you talk about policies is bringing everybody to the table. So last Wednesday, we had a public safety meeting, um, Cleveland City Council. And I asked for the public safety director and I called on to the chairman for us to bring all fifty-eight cities together. This is not just something we can do in Cleveland. One of the things that we had to deal with this year was the fact that um, the Cuyahoga County Sheriff's Department first said they don't want to patrol down, eh, eh, downtown no more. But also understand that, that what happens if you pull the sheriffs from there. You want Cleveland police to be patrolling and monitoring the Guardians games, the Cavs games, um, something that may be going out at Playhouse by themselves. So what I called for was to make sure Cuyahoga County Executive Chris Renee changed the policy. So today, stand forward, um, they have updated their new pursuit policy and they're rolling it out to make sure residents understand as well as the sheriffs on what they can chase and why they shouldn't chase. That is something good. But step further, as a council person, I am writing a letter to all fifty-eight counties as well as um, council members of those cities and requiring them to come to the table for us to have an open dialogue to figure out a resolution for countywide purposes.
Thank you. What are your plans to increase access to stable, affordable, healthy food options in Ward five?
So first and foremost, I'm glad that we are here right now at the Jerry Suttoris um, location on East Twenty Second, right across the street where St. Vincent's Charity Hospital is coming down. Uh, we are announcing that we're bringing an opportunity center here to the central neighborhood in partnership with Goodwill. The Opportunity Center is going to have a grocery store. It also going to have other nonprofits and space for other hubs to be able to come there so you can get the resources. So one of the things you think about when you go to a good operating grocery store or plaza, you can go in there and get your food, you can stop and get meat and find some information about resources that you need. You could also be able to get your laundry done. You also go pick on something else to eat while you there. But also you can get the resources and find out what is available. So I'm proud to be able to partner with Sisters of Charity as the council person on Ward five, as well as to Goodwill to bring something back to our neighborhood. But also understanding that that opportunity hub will be great and we're roughly get a rough estimate, which is going to be thirty million dollars. So I'm looking forward to getting elected to be able to see this project come through, to be able to advocate the dollars that we are need to complete that project.
And I'll build off of that by, I think crystallizing that when you talk about food access in Ward five, right? If you live downtown, you got the Hynons there. If you live in the Slavic Village area, you're pretty close to Steer York Common, so it's okay to get down to the Aldies. There are parts of Midtown that can get to the Aldies by Church Square. But in the heart of Central, in the heart of Kinsman, it has been food apartheid. And let's use that word conscientiously. It's not food desert, it's food apartheid, it was man-made, it was a conscious choice. We had systemic disinvestment. I particularly want to shout out the Central Kinsman Wellness Collective. I see Ms. Gray has come from the first day of the farm stop model that the Central, Central Kinsman Wellness Collective has put forward. I didn't get to come today, but I'm going to come in the next couple of days. Um, that we have people who've been, had in their line of sites that we need to fix this problem. And the Goodwill Center, uh, let's see it through. The next person who's elective, I think we can all agree, whoever's elected is going to work damn hard to make sure that that grocery store happens. But we also have the Central Kinsman Wellness Collective that potentially has this farm stop model. Let's pursue that as well because frankly, one grocery store isn't going to be enough.
Thank you. Council members receive fifteen percent of the total casino revenue that the city receives, which is then divided evenly among the city's fifteen wards. A July twenty twenty-five rule change gave council members more discretion over how the funds can be spent. How will you use the casino funds to help Ward five residents?
I believe that's my one, but I'll also, I'll shout out that um, uh, my colleague here has uh, worked very hard on the changes to the casino revenue rules, so I don't want to undercut that at all. Um, I'll tell you a little bit about how I spent them in Ward twelve and how I would spend them in Ward five. The number one thing that I did was make sure that our city services and that the responsiveness of the city was increased through how we spent those dollars. So we got a council aide at the Ward twelve office, somebody who can answer the phone more than just me and one other staff person. We get a very high volume of calls as I know Ward five does as well. We also made sure to pay for a ward crew that can go help out with illegal dumping. It's also just a basic litter and maintenance issue. We have so much litter in this city and you can't chase it down with enough community cleanups. We host, we've hosted dozens since coming into office and it's still not enough. So we need to make sure that we can get out and tackle those litter crews. We've also done park improvements and others things that people can see and feel in their everyday life. That's my number one goal with casino revenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, so when you talk about the casino funds, it was created at a time period that it worked for the system that they had in place. Right now, I was able to help get the support of my colleagues to vote to change um, the usage. So some of the things that I've been able to utilize, um, the casino funds is for making sure we support our youth uh, sports teams and our cheerleading teams. Making sure we provided funding to be able to have a ward crew to help with additional grass cut and trash pickup. Making sure we have food carts so we can be able to help assist people with the opportunities for, to be able to have food and supporting those different neighborhoods. Uh, playground upgrades that we've made to different areas in our neighborhood was one of the biggest things that we did. Also being able to have dollars on, on, on standby to help support the program and the quality programs in different nonprofits and different organizations as well. Having those casino funds is something that um, I believe is good for the council, but it's also sometimes things that you are able to have dollars for you to be able to prioritize that administration oftentimes don't think, see as a top priority. So that is something that I look forward to. And I also got to organize on the, on the books to be able to increase the amount of funding from that hundred and thirty thousand that we get each year to make it a little bit more so we can do more.
Thank you. So our next question is um, from vote four one one. What strategies would you support to increase civic and voter participation in a historically underrepresented area?
One of the things that we deal with when you talk about voter participation is all about um, the civic engagement and the education. We have to make sure that government on a local, local government is working for the people so they can have a reason to vote. The problem is not a voter registration thing, it's a voter participation issue. And what happens is people stop having faith or because they don't have, they lost hope because they haven't seen nothing gone. So one of the things I've done since I've been in the office to make sure people are engaged. When a resident called me saying I need a dumpster, I said, Ms. Duncan, I got you on a dumpster day. When you talk about I need my street resurfaced, we got your street resurfaced. When you talk about making sure city service, basic city services is working for the people, that's when a resident knows that government and voting is important. But we also got to make sure they are educated and informed on how to actually vote and how to participate and understanding that sitting at home is not the way to go. We have to make sure our voices are heard and not just local election, but in every election. And that's how you have to engage the people by meeting them where they are at, in their houses, in their neighborhoods, at different times of day so they can be informed on what's going on.
Absolutely, we saw, we've seen over the decades, right? A decrease in voter participation in, in the country and certainly in local elections. I mean, in these local elections, we'll be really lucky if we break twenty percent voter participation. That will actually be exceptional. And why has that happened, right? At the federal and state level, we have so many people who've just given up on the belief that who they vote for will change their everyday life. If it seems like Democrats and Republicans are just going to deliver on the same thing, why are you got bother, going to bother voting for president? You're going to vote for the person who, I don't know, if you even bother showing up, who says like he's going to promise you something that you can deliver on. And what we need are, is to rebuild trust in local government. We need to rebuild trust in government and that can start here by doing things that people see and feel in their everyday lives. Things like garbage bins getting done on time, a council office that responds. And that does absolutely mean you have to be knocking doors and talking to people year round, not just once every four years when you're up for election. I've canvassed my ward multiple times over, I've been proud to do it in this race and I'll be proud to do it again.
Thank you. What bills or laws did you sponsor during your term that directly impacted your ward? What are you most proud of?
Well, I'm gonna um, start of course with the lighting bill that I talked about because I think it's the perfect example of collaboration. And then I'll talk about, uh, that one passed, then I'll talk about one that didn't pass. I mentioned to you the lighting bill, I had this incredible group of seniors. They're living in this low-income senior building and their cars are getting broken into and their landlord isn't doing anything. First, we had to get their elevator fixed, their elevator wasn't working. And then once that, we got that done, the tenants were ready to go and we kind of organized them into a group to advocate around getting the lights in their parking lot improved. And that took legislation. So that was that perfect marriage of, hey, here's the community, it, they need something passed into law. We got it drafted, researched, passed into law, made a huge difference in people's lives. I was really also proud to sponsor, though it didn't pass, the participatory budgeting amendment that would have put five million dollars directly into the hands of Clevelanders to decide how it was being handled. You could have seen projects like park improvements and other things. Unfortunately, it didn't pass, but I'm still honored to have supported it.
Um, I would definitely say a couple of the bills that I, legislation that I've supported and um, passed is one, when we had ARPA funded and I noticed that there was opportunity for additional funding to come down, where we had residents throughout the city of Cleveland when they had outstanding bill and outstanding debt, I was able to help with, work with the county to make sure all that debt got wiped away. So about two point nine million dollars worth of debt was wiped away from Cleveland Public Power residents in the city of Cleveland. Declare gun violence as a public health crisis earlier this year. Also starting to form the African-American Mail Commission, which is very important for us to find out what is the root causes of the people in our neighborhood. From not, from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-four, there has been nine hundred fifty-three homicides in the city of Cleveland. Eight hundred and twenty-six of those were African-Americans. And if that is not a public health crisis, I don't know what is. So I was able to make sure I got the support of my colleagues to be able to get that passed through with the co-sponsor of Anthony Harrison as well. Um, also, one of the things is people say, stop.
So uh, this next one is a two-part, so I'm happy to read it again. Uh, what are some uh, implementations you can do for youth safety and the public safety? And how will this election uh, benefit youth success? It's probably if you win.
Okay, so, wow. Say it one more.
Okay, so the first one is, what are some things that you can implement for youth safety and public safety? And if you win, how will this benefit youth success?
So by me being on the um, safety committee as well as on serving on our committee for the dollars that we have to be able to help um, organization get dollars out to support them. One of the things you'd have to do with youth safety, you have to make sure you have individuals who working with the youth throughout. You can't just say, once the youth is in trouble or something is wrong, now you want to be a mentor. So I support mentorship groups, organizations such as a friendly inn, a Boys and Girls Club, um, University Settlement and making sure they are in a line to get the dollars and the grants and support. I do a lot of letters of support on grants that they go after. I also make sure we bring on enough dollars from the city of Cleveland to help support these programs to help them on the safety. But then on the safety passage, you have to make sure the right organizations are in the community. So I've had built and developed a relationship with Maisha Watkins, who is um, on the administration uh, for the gun, gun violence for Cuyahoga County. If you don't understand that office that I created, that was because we declared gun violence as a public health crisis in the city of Cleveland. Then therefore, the Cuyahoga County, Michael Hauser, took the initiative to say, we need administrator to be in place to help with everything Cuyahoga County-wide. And also making sure that we are getting our fair share of the Health and Human Services dollars that the county have to be able to tackle some of these issues in the city of Cleveland. Oftentimes, they say the city of Cleveland is a large city, so therefore they figure we can do everything on our own, but we are a city in Cuyahoga County and we do need help and support as well. So being able to have those things in place is very important.
Thank you, and I'll highlight one bill that I am really passionate about and that if I'm elected to the, to a second term, will be the focus of my first year is getting this passed. It's called Tanisha's Law. It's named for Tanisha Anderson, who died in police custody while experiencing a mental health crisis. Right now, when we have somebody who is in a mental health crisis, we need to send help, not handcuffs. Right now, we send police officers and frankly, a lot of those calls are for juveniles. We have a lot of kids are struggling and when things are going wrong, if we just send out somebody with a badge and a gun, things can go really wrong really quickly. Tanisha's Law would put in best practices from cities all around the country. Cities that have succeeded at something called care response or crisis response, where you have clinicians, behavioral health experts who show up to a scene. They're dispatched directly from nine one one. So you have nine one one dispatchers who are understanding and assessing the situation and dispatching these teams live, rather than draining our police resources for calls that would be better handled by social workers, by mental health clinicians. Tanisha's Law, we introduced it almost going on a year ago. We've got three co-sponsors and we are still waiting for the administration to approve a first hearing. Frankly, it's getting to the point that we're not going to wait very much longer. We're going to demand that first hearing alongside our uh, safety chair and vice chair. Uh, but I encourage all of you who care about youth mental health to engage with Tanisha's Law and help sign up to support this bill and tell the mayor this is something we need to get passed.
So this question comes from Leap. Why, oh, why does Cleveland not currently have contracts with Uber and Lyft to provide wheelchair accessible van options at a fixed rate like larger cities such as Chicago and New York? Can you assist with this?
I love this because I filled out the Leap questionnaire and I said, this is a new one to me, I would love to learn about this. Um, so I've attended some of Leap's disability town halls. If you don't know them, they're an organization that does a sort of workforce development for folks with physical and developmental disabilities. They're a fantastic organization and this was a new one for me, so I'm excited to learn more and see what we can do as a city.
I think some of the challenges that we deal with in the city of Cleveland, sometimes we are late to the, to the party on different things, you know? Other cities may be advanced on. Other cities may be advanced on, and assertive on how they are passing policies to be able to help the neighborhoods. And I think oftentimes in the past, the city of Cleveland been focused more so on the politics rather than focus on the issues that need to help. So one of the things I think we have to do is look at different best practices of the cities and figure out how that we get up, get caught up. And I think some of the things that the mayor has done is be able to be able to be young, energetic, motivated, but also understanding how to get caught up with the day of times when you think about when we're traveling to other cities, what they have versus what we don't have. So looking at different ways to pull those things together would be great. And I would definitely be interested in learning more about the initiative that you just spoke on.
You both reference the necessity of working collaboratively. However, sometimes collaboration calls for you to sacrifice, sacrifice your ward. Share an instance where you prioritize the constituents over politics as usual.
That's something for me, prioritize the constituents over politics is something that I live by. And also understand if, if you look at times that we passed a city budget, I voted in opposition of the budget because I didn't see nothing in the budget that was going to directly impact Ward Five. And others was like, no, you tripping. I said, no, the way we allocate community development block grant funds, where you have other neighborhoods who is not low moderate income, receiving those dollars to do whatever they want with them and just to hire people for staff positions. Meanwhile, we can't use those dollars to figure out how to address food insecurities in our neighborhood. Where we can't use those dollars to make sure we have programs in place to help individuals. Those were those dollars are, were intended for. But everybody in the neighborhood say, if you, if you use the data in Ward Five, you could go after this funding and then we're gonna just spread it all around. That ain't how you get things done. And that's the reason why some of our neighborhoods are suffering because elected officials, when I brought that up, nobody at the table wanted to take a swipe at it because they felt they were losing something that they shouldn't even be having in their neighborhood.
Thank you. I think if I could give one example, and I hope I have enough time to get to a second, but one, the first example that comes to mind about politics as usual. We have a problem in this country with money in politics and especially corporate money in politics. And unfortunately, last year, the city council did vote to double the campaign finance limits, which obviously allows more corporations, big groups like the Haslums, to essentially buy and, and control our elections. I was one of four council members that opposed that bill. I thought it was absolutely the wrong choice. And I thought it was clearly self-serving for the council to raise their own campaign finance limits. So absolutely, I put the people first there because I have run a grassroots, people-powered campaign from two thousand and twenty-one up until, up until now. I can't win this election without the people and so they are where my heart is. And I'll also share, I was the first council member to come out in support of a ceasefire resolution, given the ongoing war in, in Israel and Palestine. And I felt very critical that my heart and conscience was there. And I made sure to be clear about that much earlier than other politicians.
Thank you. What are your ideals for attracting and supporting small businesses and fostering a vibrant local economy?
I think that one's mine. And I will share with you a story from my first, from my first term, which is when we had opportunities to invest ARPA dollars. I, I knew that what my ward was hurting for and what we're hurting for across the city was vibrant commercial corridors where you could go shopping, places where you could pick up groceries, pick up a roll of paper towels without having to go to a corner store, just basic stuff. And we have these incredible historic commercial corridors all through Ward Five that have just been completely disinvested. And so I set up a specific fund for my ward that puts up to fifty thousand dollars of matching money to open small businesses. And we have seen that money help us open stores. There are more to come. And I'm really excited to bring a project like that to Ward Five and make sure that everyone across Central Kinsman, Downtown, Midtown, Slavic Village can benefit from a dedicated program that helps small businesses open and reutilize our vacant commercial spaces.
Thank you. In order for you to do this program to be able to create the economy and create sustainability for small businesses is being able to be creative. I do not think for you as the residents of Ward Five, that is wise for you to say, I elected you to be able to bring dollars to the neighborhood, but then we just going to give it to a group of other individuals to make a decision that ain't even from the neighborhood. So when you start thinking about how things are being done, when you start talking about people who supported the participatory budgeting, those individuals never lived in Cleveland, never did nothing for Cleveland, but they wanted to say, hey, I don't need the council making decisions on how a playground get upgraded, what streets get done. We're going to do that for them to have salaries and not even you in your own neighborhood. So when you talk about creating a, a system in place that can help get these old properties that do not used to be storefronts up and running, you got to understand the economy that we have right now. A lot of people are shopping online. So you have to bring businesses in place that people actually want to attract and actually needing your neighborhood so they can utilize it. Also understanding a community benefits package. So therefore, if Walgreens want to leave Cleveland or want to leave St. Louis, we got something in place to say, stay in Cleveland, but not leave St. Louis as well.
Thank you. What is your long-term vision for our city? And how would you like to work, how would, excuse me, how would you work to really truly achieve it?
I think the one thing you got to understand as being elected official, oftentimes when it's election time, individuals say, I'm gonna do this if elected, I'm gonna do this. Not one elected official can do anything by themselves. It takes a team. And one of the things I've learned through my, through my background of playing sports and being in leadership roles ever since I was around seventeen, eighteen years old, is being able to build relationships and work with individuals. So I'm safe to say that if I need something or work with something, I know I could pick up the phone and call any one of my colleagues to get some support and be able to whip some votes. I'm also able to pick up the phone and call our Cuyahoga County Councilperson, Purnell Jones, and get some support. Our state representative, Terrence Upchurch, to get some support. And even our wonderful Congresswoman, Chantel Brown, to get support. So one of the things we have to do is work together and figure out what is the best need. We know all of different issues that everybody like to say, but let's start talking about how build our neighborhood up so it can be a thriving Ward Five for everyone.
Thank you. And I, if you haven't gotten a chance to pick one up, these are outside on the literature table and I encourage everyone to get one. It was this exact question that inspired me to make this, which I call sort of my roadmap. And it came from a, a, a point where if you're, if you want to envision a city, right? In a way, if we close our eyes and we think about the city that we all want to live in, I bet we'd imagine a lot of the same stuff, even despite the diversity of backgrounds, everything. We would want to feel safe in our homes. We would want a great place to live where we're okay sending our kids to the local school or the local park. You have that sense of safety and community that so often we've lost. And so I, what I really wanted was a visual representation, not just of that feeling of community, but very specifically, how do you get there? And there are six areas on this document and a lot of little Easter eggs, things that I love, but I just want to go through them. Reliable city services, again, having a government you trust. Safe, affordable housing. Shop where you live, that's that commercial corridor. Supporting our youth, we've talked about that a lot. Send help, not handcuffs. And as always, Clevelanders over billionaires.
Thank you. What is the highest priority for the advancement of Ward Five? How would you accomplish progress towards this priority?
Thank you, I appreciate that. I feel like in some ways it's kind of similar to that question about, you know, what's your number one thing that you'd want to do? So I am going to reiterate that point about addressing the inequalities that we have in our society because until we close that gap, Cleveland is never going to be the city we want it to be for anybody. It doesn't matter which side of the gap you're on. One side of the gap is a lot harder than the other side of the gap. And let's say that out loud and clearly. But until we have a society where everybody can succeed and thrive, no one's ever going to be truly happy here. So it's that sense of collective progress that I really hold near and dear to. And so what does that look like? If I had a magic wand and I could fix any one thing in the ward, housing. Housing, absolutely. We have far too many houses. Folks can't keep up if they're homeowners or they have landlords who aren't fixing things. When I was a legal aid attorney, I saw it every single day. We have folks living in places you'd never want your mom living in, you'd never want your grandma living in. It is not okay. And this is stuff that is within our control if we enforce the rules that we have as a city and hold landlords accountable.
Can you say that question one more time?
Yes. What is the highest priority for the advancement of Ward Five? How would you accomplish progress towards this priority?
The highest priority is the people. And what I mean by the people is getting them involved. Oftentimes, people come up with decisions on what they think the people want. I'm proud to say that through my first term in office, we create an asset mapping opportunity where we talked and did surveys with residents about what they want to see. And one of the top things that residents said they wanted to see is grocery store. They wanted to see housing. They wanted to see programs for seniors. And also they said that they need workforce and job creation. That's the plan. We have to, we have to listen with both our ears and not use both our mouths to get things done. And one of the things that we have to do is come up with ways to accomplish these goals that the resident told you to do. Oftentimes, people try to tell you what you want, but you don't understand what the people want if you haven't been there where they've been at.
I think this worked out great because the next question actually was about housing. So affordable housing is critical. What specific plans do you have to create more housing that Clevelanders can afford?
That is beautiful. So I'm proud of the initiative that we have since I've been on council. We passed a ten million dollar budget with my, myself, Councilman Harrison and Councilwoman Santana, where we've been able to collaborate with the Cuyahoga County Land Bank. And through this initiative, we're going to build eight additional new houses as well as twelve new renovations and upgrade homes as well. Also through my community benefit package, I've been able to leverage dollars to help home repairs. So as of today, seventy-eight residents are going to receive ten to fifteen thousand dollars of home repairs because of the community benefits packages that I was able to negotiate before we had a community benefits ordinance package in the city of Cleveland, to be able to be, think, think outside the box to be able to assist. But being able to build homes is going to take the public and the nonprofit sector to, the private sector to get involved, get in line. It's important that we have quicker loans and a rocket mortgage down there to be able to invest. Making sure KeyBank, making sure all these banking institutions are doing the work that we asked them to do to be able to invest in good homes in our neighborhood.
Absolutely. And, you know, I think you got to tackle this both from the homeowner's side and from the rental side. In terms of home repair for homeowners, one hundred and ten percent. It has become harder and harder to maintain a home, especially one that hasn't had substantial investments for many decades. We're having essentially the clock is running out on the roofs and on the boilers and, and on the gas stoves in all of these homes all across Ward Five. And so we know we kind of have a ticking time bomb that that's going off. But the other thing we need to make sure to tackle is rentals because we have an incredible rental stock that goes all the way from Terminal Tower, okay, through CSU, we've got some CSU students here, through Midtown and into substantial CMHA housing. And what we know is that landlords are not always accountable to be held to that high standard. So I was really honored to help draft and pass the Residents First Law that holds out-of-state landlords accountable. But I've also worked to make sure that CMHA is held accountable in terms of pay-to-stay laws that help people stay in their properties. And I'd also support a source of income protection as well.
Speaking of Cleveland State, Cleveland State University seems to be in the headlines a lot, from the RTA to the radio station. How do you plan to work with the university to combat this bad look on downtown university?
Absolutely. So first of all, let's say loudly and clearly that CSU is a, is the heart of Ward Five as much as any other area, right? We know that we have to make sure that our, the student body is supported and that this university can thrive for a long time to come. I've been working with CSU long before this particular race. I have a background in student loan law. I worked with CSU, Tri-C, where we are right now, and six other institutions of higher ed in Cleveland to make sure that they weren't withholding student transcripts because of small amounts of debt. But now that we're looking at the councilperson who's going to represent Ward Five, you need to have a councilperson who's ready to stand up and fight for what students need on this campus. And in terms of this U-Pass situation, the selling off of a community radio station, what you can tell is that the administration right now does not have the student interest at heart. And we need to make sure that the financials of the university are sound. I have stood with the students in terms of the U-Pass, in terms of WCSB. I'm ready to keep fighting and I'm really glad that CSU is in the ward.
Thank you. So given that CSU is in the current Ward Five, one of the things that I was able to do, once they came up with the decision about the U-Pass, not only did I pick up the phone and call Dr. Bloomberg on her cell phone, I actually sent her a letter and requested some changes to be happen. And you look up with the support of the CSU students, with the supporter community, they reversed that decision. When you start talking about decisions of what's being made on CSU, they're losing a lot of funding and they're down. They're trying to talk about how many classes and programs they just recently dropped. They're talking about different ways to be able to fund their gap. They're talking about the state is not giving them the money that they're supposed to be done. And therefore, you have to be able to be strategic and form the relationships to be able to get things accomplished. It's bigger than just us yelling and screaming. It's about getting in that room, coming up with a compromise of a decision with our non-negotiables and what we want to see. So I pro, I stand proud of being able to work with the CSU students and also let the CSU students know I live in Walker Weeds. So if you need me, you can always find me because I stay there.
Thank you. What is the contingency if POTUS decides to send the National Guard to Cleveland?
So one, one of the things that I, I had a conversation with my colleagues at a table during caucus and I asked the question like, what happens if the National Guard come here? Why do everyone scream no? I said, at the end of the day, every time you get on social media and they say they look at the Remembers page, you see people dying. You see violence happening. I said, have we at least opened up our minds to figure out what does it mean to be the National Guards? Because I don't know, I've never been here to see National Guards in the neighborhood. But what I do hear, I hear the voices of the residents saying they're tired of hearing the gun violence every day. They keep talking about they want extra patrol, but we as a city of Cleveland can't figure out how to hire more police officers. So do not, me being an individual of having an open mind, it's not for me saying being in favor of the National Guard, it's me saying this, how do we figure out a resolution to get extra support to make sure we have background and support in our neighborhoods? And that does not mean just outright outlaw saying no to the National Guards. We also need the Ohio State, statewide, statewide Patrol Unit to be here in the city as well.
I'll be honest, I've been very concerned about this answer that my, that my colleague has given. And I want to be unbelievably clear with everybody who's here. The National Guard coming into cities like Chicago, coming into LA, potentially coming into Cleveland, it's not happening out of nowhere. It's happening because of the Trump administration, because of enforcement specifically against black and brown communities. What we are seeing coming out of Chicago are stories of six-year-old girls being zip-tied and dragged out of apartments. Yes, absolutely, we need to have safety on our streets. You'd be a fool to look around Cleveland and think that we have tackled this. But the National Guard is not the answer to our problems. We are Americans, we are ruled by law, not by our own military driving down our streets. I don't want to see tanks coming down Euclid Avenue. Absolutely emphatically, we should say no to the National Guard here in Cleveland, but of course, yes to safety.
Voter turnout was less than great. What can you and city council do to make people believe in municipal and local government again?
So one of those things people got to understand is low voter turnout is not just an elected official problem. It's everybody. How many young people are seeing their parents go vote? When you look at the demographics of the single-parent household, sometimes you got that head in the household got to worry about putting food on the table as opposed to just going there to vote. You know what I mean? So it's, it's not just one of those situations, man, people just, you should be turning the voter turnout. I say, how many times have you seen me canvass? How many times have you seen me canvass off-years? How many times have you seen me educate people, meet where they at, go into their senior building, go into their neighborhood, talk to their cousins, share stuff on social media? When you notice the civic engagement and a lack of education is a, is a major issue. When we have kids that are advancing to the fourth grade, but only thirty-three percent of them can read, but also eighty percent went to the fourth grade. When you talk about seventy-eight percent are graduating and they do not have the intelligence to understand what's going on, so of course, they're not paying attention to voting. It's all about what we have available for our residents so they can understand.
Absolutely. And what I keep coming back to with, with the turnout question, with the civic engagement question, is what can we do to rebuild the broken trust between residents and their government? We have lost this sense that your government is actually working for you. And I can't fix what's happening at the federal level. I can't even fix what's happening in Ohio. And I worry for our future that it will be decades before we are able to have, for instance, maps across the state of Ohio that are reflective of our true politics. But what I can- But what I can do is here on the local level, show people that their city councilperson matters, that their city councilperson makes a difference. And that means responding to every single phone call that comes through our office. It means showing up in people's living rooms. It means canvassing, it means coming to the community conversations, the residents having your cell phone, and delivering for people at the end of the day. We're about to have a ribbon cutting at a new park that we were able to renovate during my first term with a $1.5 million investment in Calgary. If you live near Calgary Park, that is something I've been able to deliver for you, and I look forward to doing that in Ward V.
Thank you. How do we keep special interest groups out of our Ward V? I recently learned that every dollar someone earns in Ward V only stays around for six hours. This is why it's a poor ward.
I love that question. It seems like two different ones, right? Like the special interest in this idea of sort of corporate, corporate interests, and then you have this economy question, right? And I love this economy question because, you know, you'd look at the work of, of Mr. Baker. You mentioned Mr. Baker, his, his historical photos of Central. You look at the shopping options that there used to be, where you could get that dollar and it would stay in Central because you could use it. If you're at CSU's campus, if you're downtown, you're much more likely right now for your dollar to stay downtown, at least for a little bit. I would bet it, I would bet it stays downtown for maybe eight hours and then it, and then it leaves. Um, but we have created this huge national economy, right? Ordering stuff on Amazon, going down to Target at Steel Yard. But the more we can rebuild a Cleveland economy where you're really proud to shop local, that you know that business owner, you know when you're getting that ice cream from that person, what Mr. Jones did at the end of the day and where he lives and he's your neighbor. The more we can rebuild that, the longer those dollars stay in our community, and then we have a thriving and successful economy.
In order to have a thriving and successful economy, you have to have, um, the infrastructure and you've got to have the stores in place so the dollar can triculate throughout the community. Right now, you're looking at some of the storefronts that once was there, um, from the 60s to 70s, they are no longer there because obviously sometimes things and businesses get passed down to that child who definitely didn't want to do that part of the career. Unlike myself, I don't shop at no Target because, uh, their, 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 their best practices don't work with my neighborhood. So one of those things that I would not do is take my dollar there. I'd much rather find businesses in the neighborhood, but also working with organizations to create opportunities like we have in War V. We have the Urban League in our neighborhood, where they can help those individuals, small businesses, get a startup, opportunity to create your business plan, to get a model. But then working with your community development corporations on some of their storefronts to say, hey, how can I get my business in there? Instead of me just doing my business outside of my home. So you got to be creative, you got to bring those businesses back to the neighborhood so therefore the dollars can start to triculate throughout the community.
What are you going to do to get the residents to feel at ease about the explosions? What's the progress on that? And what can you offer the community? Like crime, housing, school, and how can you help in those areas?
That is a beautiful question and very important. So, um, I don't, I'm not a media person. I don't jump down and try to help the residents in Guard Valley to try to gain favor in War V. Um, I've been in War V my entire life, working with residents. When the fire explosion took place, um, the first one, I was there, not even as elected official, helping and coordinating with individuals like Bridget Smith Jackson, who was boots on the ground. Um, I will tell you, yesterday at 2 o'clock, we just had a meeting with all the residents and the families, and we brought all the city departments to the table because we didn't need the answers. I was able to find out that the state is actually the ones who is doing the investigation. Also was able to find a point of contact. Also, we was able to be able to provide a resource fair, not a resource, um, different vendors at the city to be able to get resources to the residents. So one of the things I'm doing is staying connected with all of those individuals who are victims of the fire explosion and making sure they get all their needs met. Like I said, from the first day, June 23rd, when that happened, uh, by the second week, everybody was almost housed of all of those families because of the work we did in my office.
Absolutely. So let's be, I, I want to make sure we put the fire and the explosion in the broader context and history of Rainbow Terrace. When you think about this development, this September was actually the 50-year anniversary of the first rent strike at Rainbow Terrace because of conditions issues at that property. You know, there are legacy housing organizers who I've been honored to learn from, who worked that initial rent strike. Because Rainbow Terrace was essentially built on an old landfill. There have been moisture issues, dampness, maintenance issues for the entire time that the property has been in Cleveland. And I have not, I was not the councilperson for Rainbow Terrace when the explosion happened, I'll be very clear about that. But I did go that day. I went the day after I dropped off supplies. I went the day after that to make sure to help sort through donations. And I know that if I'm elected, I will help pursue this and make sure that those families get answers and that every single resident of Rainbow Terrace gets the dignity that they deserve of a high-quality place to live.
Thank you. What road do you see tax incentives playing in our city? Uh, how will you measure their return on investment?
That's a great question. So, um, I want to just be clear, when you talk about tax incentives, right? We have a couple of different levers that the city pulls. You might hear, you know, words like tiffs or words like abatement. In my one-minute answer, I don't have enough time to go through all of that. But here's what you need to know. These are ways for the city to make development happen that couldn't happen otherwise. And essentially, the real estate market across Cleveland is upside down. It costs more to build a house almost anywhere in the city, aside from Ohio City and right near, um, uh, university, uh, university circle, than you can sell it for. And so you need those development dollars to make a basic project happen. And so I'm never going to be the person who comes in and says, all tax abatements are bad, all tiffs are bad. But it has to be measured and it has to be commensurate with actual community benefits that if these developers are getting huge incentives from the city, they're then reinvesting in the communities that are making these developments happen and ultimately making them profitable. And absolutely, I hope we get to a point where those tax incentives are not needed.
I just, just from the tax incentives standpoint, um, those are opportunities for you to figure out a location that hasn't been developed and how to create the development. If you talk about the cost of a home right now, just to break it down, it costs anywhere between $300,000 to build a home. But then also, when you talk about your neighborhood, you said, I don't want to be priced out of my neighborhood. But you say, hey, I'm tired of having all this lack of development or I'm tired of these properties. You got to be able to figure out that balance, and that's where you have somebody or entity who does the subsidy to be able to get that price for that home to sell at $150,000 as opposed to you having to pay $350,000 for that profit. Um, one of the things that I do help is making sure within those tiff benefits, and it's important to have somebody as a councilperson who understands this, is to be able to say, what does a community benefit package look like? Before we even start to talk about the finances, so we can include that in the package. So therefore, we get a return on our investment on our dollars, of taxpayer dollars. So I'd figure out creative ways to work to get things in our neighborhood.
Thank you. All right, so this is actually going to be our last question that I have right here. So I read it and it's beautiful. So it's more like a statement, but you guys will get a minute to answer it. We have so many children and young people that needs more than a rec. Our youth are lost. What can you do to redirect our children? I listen to the youth, they want to skate. They want to show their talent. These children are the future of our city, our community, our state, our nation. Until we can re-
Until we can.
Right, right? Thank you. Until we can redirect them to positive things, we're going to lose them. Give us more in our community for these youth can do.
One of the things we have to do is first, we have to make sure we have, um, things for them to actually do. One thing that was helpful for me when I was growing up is having the Larry Wazels, having the Melvin Berks, having the Mike Powers, having the Jerome Bakers, having the Ron Sorders, having the Ron Harris, having all these different individual leaders in the neighborhood who provided different programs. You know what's so amazing for me at War V is the Heaven Train bus still come every Saturday. The blue bus come every Saturday. You know what that means? It's a sense of hope for us. So we have to create a youth program that meets the needs of everyone. And with my youth development background, with my sports management background, I'm proud to say that I'm looking forward to rolling out a year-long calendar of programs. And that's important for us to be able to support initiatives to generate revenue for our recreation centers. We can't have these new state-of-the-art rec centers that got renovated where we put in $16 million and they're empty. So we got to meet the youth where they are at and not just doing the same old thing. I've been very critical of our Commissioner of Parks and Recreation, Commissioner Gibson Chandler telling them we got to change and shake things up. And that's how you have to get things done for our youth.
I, first of all, love that question, and I hope that whoever wrote, writes, wrote it becomes a poet or- thank you very much. Um, and what I love about it is it invoked for me this sense of, of, of like, community connection that I have been so honored to have at this job and that I've loved building both across all my current neighborhoods in Ward 12, but I'm building it in Ward V as well. I've been out knocking almost every single person who came in here. I introduced myself, I said, hey, I've been on your, you said, I've been on, you've been on my street. And you have to have this sense of community connection. And the number one thing you know, if you are in community in Cleveland, is that this is a city of helpers. There are so few people in our neighborhoods who don't want better for it, who don't want something more than what they're getting right now. And where I think our politics has always struggled is we haven't been able to harness that desire to help into ways that we can really see change, that we can get those helpers and make, and make better for our youth. They deserve better. There's no shortage of the helpers, but making sure we're coordinating and everybody has a direction that we can put that help into action, that's one of our roles.
Thank you. So I tortured you guys enough tonight, so let's give it up for the candidates here. So now we will move into your, your closing. For two minutes, we'll do them reverse order. So Councilman, you're first for your closing.
Hi, War V, I'm Councilmember Richard A. Starr. I'm coming to you to understand that, yes, we've had new boundaries, new wars, new lines. But War V needs someone that can actually accomplish and get things done. No, it is not about fancy speeches. No, it's not talking about how great you are. It's all about your track record and your receipts. There has never been a time where I've mentioned that residents call my office too much. It's never been a time where I've been too unavailable for residents. There always been a time that I may be over-available because I want to help and care. This race in War V is not about anybody want to say they want to be in our neighborhood because they see the beautiful opportunities.